I'd like to call the meeting back to order at 7:13 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
All right, thank you. And discussion? All in favor? That's six in favor. Like a motion to approve the consenting agenda. That includes the approval of the minutes of January 23rd and January 30th, 2018, as submitted, acceptance of the recommendations from the Committee on Special Education, acceptance of recommendation from the Committee on Preschool, Special Education, and the acceptance of recommendations from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six in favor? And are there no special reports?
No special reports tonight.
Okay. So this is the time we have visitor speaking time. This time is provided within the agenda for residents to bring concerns and comments to the Board. Comments should not be related to any particular individual or to the specifics of negotiations since it is not proper for the Board to discuss these issues in public session. A request to speak and a comment form must be filled out prior to the start of the citizens' comment period and given to the district clerk. It is expected that speakers will limit their time, their comments to five minutes or less. The Board reserves the right to limit the total amount of time spent on the citizens' comment period based on the length of the agenda. Written communications to the Board, Board of Education are encouraged as well.
We have a speaker?
We do have a speaker. And Ms. Jenny McCullough, will you please join us?
We'll see. Is that working? Okay. Well, good evening. My name is Jenny McCullough. I'm a resident of Penfield since 1978. Twenty years ago, Mark and I were relating that I was on the school board just as you were. So, good for you guys. More power to you. Now, I am here tonight to sort out a misunderstanding. Last Friday evening, before the jazz concert, I was at Penfield High School distributing flyers regarding the Save Shadow Pines effort. A nice young man, Mr. Pfeifer, asked me to leave the premises. He cited a communication with the superintendent wherein my presence and my distribution of said flyers for Saving Shadow Pines might be construed as bias on the part of the Penfield Central School District. I did comply with his request, a little grudgingly, I might say, but I did comply. So, after sorting out my thoughts about what happened last Friday, I decided to do a bit of research. So now I have a question prefaced with my comments and information I obtained from our very own district handbook. Now, according to the Penfield Central School District Code of Conduct, Section 16, titled "Visitors to School and Public Conduct," on page 46, item number three, and I will read that to you. Visitors attending after-school hours functions that are open to the public, such as PTO meetings or public gatherings, are not required to register as visitors. So that's my number one thing. I was there in attendance. I did not need to register. And now the second thing, also from Section 16, page 47, items two and three, titled "Public Conduct on School Property." And it states, "The restrictions on public conduct on school property and at school functions contained in this code of conduct are not intended to limit freedom of speech or peaceful assembly. The district recognizes that free inquiry and free expression are indispensable to the objects of this district. The purpose of this code is to maintain public order and prevent the abuse of the rights of others. All persons on school property or attending a school function shall conduct themselves in a respectful and orderly manner. In addition, all persons on school property," excuse me, my asthma, "or attending a school function are expected to be properly attired for the purposes they are there." So, I was peaceful. I was handing out flyers. I was opening and holding doors for attendees. I was complimenting the jazz band participants on their lovely garb that they showed up in. I was guiding disabled and impaired individuals to a very particular door in that entrance that had no snow slush buildup in order to prevent them from slipping or sliding or falling. I was wishing a good night to attendees. I was saying have a wonderful time. I was complimenting them on coming out for their wonderful night in that frigid weather. And as far as orderly goes, I asked every single person that I approached regarding the Saving Shadow Pines if they were a Penfield townie and if they chose to accept the information that I had there. I did not force my information on anyone. I explicitly did not give it to anyone who was not interested. So, most of the people, I would have to say 95% to 98% of the people there were very welcoming of the information that I had about the Shadow Pines because it's such a big deal in this district. Most people welcomed it. If they did not accept it, I said, "Thank you." I gave them a smile and so be it. And as far as dress, well, I was dressed appropriately, winter coat, hat, scarf, boots, gloves. So my contention is this, the public, the high school, at this stage of the game, except for the votes that we hold here in May, is not a public polling place, as it was not that night. There is no mention of political, party, or public affiliation in anything that the town of Penfield is doing. It is a yes or no vote. There is no one running for office. If anyone with a contrary view wants to hand out info for these community opportunities, they should be able to do so. My information concerns a referendum on Tuesday, February 27th, to be held at the Penfield Community Center for citizens simply to say yes or no, not to red or blue, not to Democrat, Republican, not for President, for Vice President, for school board, anything. Yes or no, plain and simple. So I guess what I'm here to do is ask you why the nice young man sitting over there was asked for me to leave the premises. Was it from a complaint from someone who did not agree with the information that I was handing out? And in addition to that, I would like to know if you know specifically what federal, state, local law this allows me from being on the premises. It is for a local referendum, not a political. It is Saving Shadow Pines, plain and simple, and anyone else who is in opposition to that, I think, should have the equal right as I do to be on school premises, plain and simple. And you were nice to me.
I first of all want to thank you for saying my staff member was nice, so I will keep that in consideration. As you know, as a former Board member, the Board doesn't have conversations at visitor speaking time, but what I'd like to offer is if you and I could touch base tomorrow and sit down and have a conversation about that. We typically don't allow outside groups to distribute on school grounds for that exact reason. We don't want every group coming in with their cause to distribute to people coming to a jazz festival or a concert or an event here. But in terms of the specific pieces you read from the Code of Conduct, I'd love to sit down with you and go over any of the concerns and answer any questions you have.
Now, I know the code very specifically mentions politics. I did not read, and I read through the whole thing, objection to something as I am speaking to you tonight.
And I think that's why I'd like to have a conversation with you because I haven't--
I can't read. Who are you?
Oh, I'm Dr. Tom Putnam, the Superintendent.
Thank you.
So, we can reminisce about your time on the Board.
No, we don't need to do that.
I'm sure you have some history to share with me, but I'd like the time to reach out. So, do you have my contact information? Or Sharon Irkfits, the district clerk?
Sharon can give it to me. All right. You mean directly to you or do I call Sharon or do I call Nancy?
Oh, if you call Sharon, she sits right in my office. So if you call Sharon and we can set up a time to continue this conversation, I'd be happy to do so.
If I can get that number for you tonight, I would appreciate that because hopefully you'll be in school for part of the day, at least for the snow, but I have another town board meeting to go to tomorrow night, so.
Sure. And if it's not tomorrow, the next day, but we'll get you on my schedule as soon as possible, be happy to continue the conversation.
Okay. I would appreciate that and I hope that you do understand that anyone should be able to, especially in something that impacts the school district so implicitly.
So with Shadow Pines, it is, as you know, a hot button topic in not just our district, but Webster District as well, where the town extends.
Yes, I do know that.
And the district has been very clear, we've said on the moratorium committee, we are not taking a stand one way or the other.
You should not.
So I appreciate that, but I'm happy to have a continued conversation and work some things out.
So is there a best time to call?
You give me a call anytime. If I don't pick up, Sharon will pick up and we'll schedule a time that works for both of us.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank you for coming, speaking to us. You know, it's nice to have a situation where there's a disagreement that we deal with as in a civil discourse. You've done the research and you've spoken to us as opposed to what often happens, which is some kind of confrontation. So we appreciate you coming and speaking to us in this manner. I think it really is very constructive.
Okay. Hopefully we can come to some type of agreement.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other speakers? Next up is Claire Gao to give us the student's representative report.
Okay, so these past few weeks at Harris Hill, the annual anti-bullying assembly was held hosted by Mr. Kevin McCarthy, where students learned to stop, think, be strong, and get help. At Cobles, Almetta Whitis paid a visit to Cobles students in order to spread her message about celebrating diversity, and Cobles hosted their snowball dance in the gym last Friday. At Indian Landing, teachers and students worked hard the past few weeks working on mid-year assessments on reading, writing, and math skills. And at Scribner, Scribner kicked off their annual family reading program, where students not only read but interacted with books as part of their international theme, One World, Many Stories, where students traveled to Australia, Switzerland, China, and Canada through great books and stories. Also, a retired Scribner teacher returned to Ms. Fink's fifth-grade class to give an interactive Civil War presentation and brought several artifacts found on family poverty where one of the battles was fought in Virginia. At Bay Trail, some of Mrs. Midas's computer class students presented business products created in their technology classes to staff around the school district, and the math council team finished third in the chapter competition and have continued on to the state competition. At Penfield High School, students across the Penfield Central School District sang with the amazing Jane Monheit this past weekend at the annual jazz fundraiser concert. For the past week, students from the elementary, middle, and high schools have been diligently preparing for the final performance. And this week is also National School Counseling Week, where students and teachers across the district are celebrating our amazing school counselors for their support.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Next is Tom, Dr. Putnam, to give us the superintendent's report.
Claire, thank you very much. I didn't get the chance to go to everything, but I just want to say I got a chance to be at Cobles for their, you mentioned their speaker, and absolutely tremendous in terms of one woman who came in and captivated that audience with African storytelling and dance. And when I was there with the kindergarten through second grade, she came in and was singing, and all of a sudden, every kid was singing the song. So I turned to Dr. Kenny, I was like, "Oh, they learned this song? No, they just, they literally picked it up from her singing this African song." It was really, it was amazing. So I had to leave to go to a meeting because otherwise I would have been up there dancing with her and nobody needs to see that. So, thank you for sharing. This evening, I have a student and staff honors. We have an update to the 2018 Elementary Additions Project. It says to be updated by myself and Dr. Sansoussi, but I'm going to let Dr. Sansoussi take that because he does a great job with it, as well as the 2018-19 Capital Project budget review. Science Olympiad in terms of student honors, just a congratulations to our PHS Science Olympiad team. They won over 40 medals at the regional competition and qualified for the state competition being held at Lemoine College on February 24th. Very proud of our team. This is a team, just want to point out that we didn't have a Science Olympiad team, a very strong one at the high school years ago, but students had a strong team at the middle school and when they came up, this is student-created. They really worked to build this team and I just think that's really cool, something that happens here in Penfield. I'm not sure if anybody could get there last night, but the very exciting Annual Senior Portfolio Evening was last night and congratulations to the seniors whose artwork is being showcased last night at the reception. And all their artwork will be up at the high school on the first floor through the month of February, so if Board members wanted to pop in and take a look, if you weren't able to get there last year. I tweeted about it this morning. There's some, I put some images in there. I am just absolutely impressed, as we all are, when we talk about the artwork that our students have, the ability, all different kinds, jewelry-making, sculpture, some artwork that was part of a portfolio to get into the Fashion Institute in New York City. Just amazing, amazing talent. And as a high school student, I was told by my art teacher that the only art class I was allowed to take was creative crafts because I had no talent. I'm always absolutely impressed with these kids. We carved out of balsa wood when I was in high school, so that's the only thing they allowed me to do. Another great kudos for the high school. Penfield High School has been named as a high-performing reward school by New York State Education Department. PHS was recognized for its outstanding performance on the English Language Arts and Math Exams for both 2015-16 and the 2016-17 school year, as well as making adequate yearly progress with no significant gaps in student performance. And so, just another great kudos for the work that's happening with our teachers in the classroom and our students at the high school. Penfield Global Booster Donation, the Global Booster Club has generously donated three touchscreen TVs. The touchscreens will replace the Hall of Fame and All-American plaques, as well as the photo banners and the MVP/MIP plaques in the hall as you enter the athletic music entrance. The one thing I'll just clarify is, all of the plaques for our Hall of Fame graduates, they will remain in place, but their names and photos will also be on this interactive touchscreen TV. And then moving forward, instead of getting a plaque, they'll be added into the touchscreen TV. If you walk in at the north entrance, there's these banners that are made up each year of every sporting team, and they're nice banners, but you take them down and so we only have one year's worth of sports teams. With the interactive television set, it's all, there's no software with it, it's all in the television. We'll be able to keep those photos and we can go all the way back to as long as we have photos and then add them. So when a visitor's in the building, you can actually click and say, "I graduated in 2010. Go back to the soccer team and see your team picture," which I think is really cool as we build those, continue to build alumni relations. So, it'll also helpful because we have so much stuff going up in that hallway, we're running out of space, and what no one wants to do is take it down and store it somewhere and nobody can see it. So, when we give tours to the classes that come in, the graduating classes sometimes come back and we give them a tour of the school as part of their reunion, this will be a really nice feature. It's a great, nice-to-have, not an essential for a school district to have, so the boosters are making that donation, I think, is great. This week is National School Counseling Week, school counseling helping students reach for the stars. It's celebrated all this week, and so just a shout-out to our hard-working school counselors who help our students achieve academic, social, and career success. We just have an incredible mental health team throughout our district and incredible school counselors who help, not just for helping kids select coursework, deal with issues, go to college. They really are a great part of all six of our schools and we appreciate everything that they do. And that is my last update.
Okay. Before we move on, does anyone have any questions, Dr. Putnam? And I neglected to say, does anyone have any questions for Claire?
Both luck out, Claire.
Yeah. Well, no, not quite.
Okay.
I have a question regarding the senior portfolios. We've had, year after year, we have some very talented people. Do we ever hear about what happens to them when they leave in terms of alumni? Have they gone on to do great things? Because it's--
They do.
Are you one of those?
I am. I just happen to know that, was it two years ago or was it last year when we had the drummer from here, from Hamilton? And he was a graduate of Penfield High School and so that would be the jazz--
That was one, absolutely, yes.
Yeah.
So we don't have, we don't keep, well, it's an interesting answer. So we don't keep track necessarily of where all of our alumni goes. Our art teachers have an incredible relationship with the students who are strong in art and take many of the art classes. So if I had Ann Ponzi here or Luke Lorenzo at the high school, they could tell you about what many of those student artists have gone on to do. I've shared here before, the Penfield Education Foundation, the not-for-profit organization. I actually came from one of those meetings prior to this board meeting. And the Penfield Education Foundation, one of the committees they're creating is an alumni committee, because one of the things they want to do to help the school district out is start gathering alumni and finding ways that they can partner with the school to sort of keep alumni connected to the school, which is, that is sort of another full-time job. So we've always looked at it and said, "What can we do with alumni? Our doors are always open, they reach out to us, but we aren't necessarily proactively going out to reach out to alumni." So I think it'll be, as that grows, it'll be a great partnership with the foundation who can take on some of that work and then, you know, the district benefits as well so we can share out on all the great things our graduates do.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Those interactive TVs, so that, you're saying that class of 2008 comes in and football, they hit football and then--
Yes.
So like, okay.
It's like Cooperstown.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wow.
They're very cool, they're very expensive.
And the people that are already on those plaques, we're going to input their names as well?
Yes. So once we've done this sort of thank you to the boosters, the process is then the district clerk, Sharon Irkfits, sends a thank you letter to the boosters. After this meeting, I'll let our athletic director, Pete Shamo, know that we can move forward. And so the process is before they go and purchase, we want to make sure we talk about it at a board meeting first. And then, yes, all of that information from the Hall of Fame plaques will be imported or put into the software. So it's actually a system, the TV is a system that it sort of, it's a product that you put right on to the interactive smart television that you can put that information in. And ideally, if it keeps growing, I don't know how far back our photos go, Pete Shamo could tell us, but just for fun, if you graduate this year and you were on the tennis team, that banner would come down for next year's tennis team, but now it'll be on interactive television. So in 25 years, when you've earned your doctorate and you come back with your children to walk through the halls to go to the jazz festival, you can show your kids that you were on the tennis team. So I think it's a really neat idea.
Yeah.
It's exciting, it's new, and I think when we talk about donations from groups like boosters, we're very thankful for what they can give us and especially when it's a nice-to-have. It's not essential to the program, but what a great nice-to-have and that's why it's nice to partner with these outside organizations like our PTAs, our sports boosters, and someday as we build the Penfield Education Foundation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good.
Yep. So I'll sort of put Dr. Sansoussi on the spot. We've been doing this roadshow presentation at all of the faculty meetings at our schools to update our staff on the changes to the Capital Project. It's pretty short and sweet. Dr. Sansoussi, do you mind presenting?
Not at all. And as Dr. Putnam mentioned, the purpose of this is to keep all of our staff in the loop as we communicate around the change in the date and the change in the scope of the Elementary Additions Project. Because as this board knows probably better than anybody else, this project has taken more twists and turns than I think any other project we've ever undertaken. And what I've explained to the, to all the schools we've visited so far and that I'll continue to explain, is sort of the history of the bus garage portion of that project, how we began two years ago planning a project that would address growth in the district, both at the elementary, in the elementary classes, and also because of that and the number of buses and the needed capacity at the bus garage. That, just for the folks perhaps tuning in for the first time, that project was initially designed to use our property for buildings and grounds on Atlantic Avenue, to move the buildings and grounds function from the existing Five Mile Line site to Atlantic Avenue, to property we own there approximately across from the town hall. As you know, that didn't work because of wetlands on the site. We had to stop, drop back, try and recraft the proposal, eventually decided on a piece of property on Plank Road, a portion of the Berry Turkey Farm, began to move forward with that and got as far as scheduling the vote before it was discovered that the land there isn't suitable for the kind of septic system that we would need to install for a bus garage. So, at that point, we're simply out of time, I think, with regard to scheduling or trying to recraft yet another proposal for the bus garage. We have folks with lots of ideas, I've heard lots of suggestions, but nothing that we could really get our arms around and move forward. The longer we wait, obviously, with regard to the additions project, the longer it will take. We know construction lead times are long, SED approval takes a long time, design has to be done before we can submit. So the longer we wait, the longer we push out that new and necessary classroom space. So we've elected, obviously the board met earlier in the month and canceled the February 13th special meeting, and it will be rescheduled to take place, the vote on the elementary classrooms addition project with the May 15 budget vote. Just want to run through very quickly what is in the project. I know the board knows this, but we may have people who are tuning in, and so we just want to take this public opportunity when we're going to be on TV to emphasize what it is rather than what it is not. So what it is, is four classroom additions at Scribner, Cobles, and Indian Landing. Those schools also contain, or the proposal at those schools also contains some renovations to ancillary spaces, capital, or cafeterias rather, gymnasiums, and lots of site work related to traffic and parent drop-off. Also includes some work at the high school in Bay Trail relative to the building condition survey, predominantly including the repair of the existing chiller plant that's currently out of service here at the high school. Also lots of sort of the work that always needs to be done if you own a home or a multimillion dollars' worth of real property, you need to keep it up to date. And so there's assortment of items, things like replacement of exterior insulation, replacement of rooftop HVAC units, replacement of a boiler, and so on. I'm going to briefly, very briefly, go through the, and very quickly, go through the schematic designs of each of the schools, and we'll look at the site plans for each of those so that the community and the board can see relatively how each of the pieces lays out. So this is Scribner. The orange areas are additions. So any space in orange on all of these slides is where the new square footage is being added. So you can see in the lower-middle part of the Scribner, of the Scribner slide-- So, you can see in the lower-middle part of the Scribner slide, the addition of the four classrooms in sort of a new wing tucked into the two existing Scribner wings. And at the top of that slide is the addition of gymnasium space to the left and cafeteria space to the right. Scribner is our most populated school, it's our largest elementary school, and it has by square footage the smallest gym and the smallest cafeteria. So, as we continue to grow, we need to remedy that. This is the Scribner site plan, all the existing buildings in brown. You can see the green and orange new additions, the new addition down at the bottom. And you can also see the creation of a new parking lot at the very top of the slide with a road going to the loading dock area. That current road goes in between the playground space and the building. And so, we think that in addition to adding some needed parking, it'll improve safety for students. Cobles, lot simpler, four classrooms attached to the end of a wing, and the blue space in the middle is renovations to the cafeteria line, not an expansion of the cafeteria, that cafeteria is trapped in the building, but rather just some improvements to the line to allow students to be more efficiently served. This is that site plan. You can see the small orange addition down at the bottom and lots of site work. The intention here is to create some additional parking, but more importantly, a method for parents to pull in and be able to drop their students off and turn around and leave without stacking as they currently do on the public street. So, we're hoping to improve traffic and student safety at drop-off. Indian Landing classrooms, Indian Landing has, as you all know, four or five different levels. So, this is sort of confusing, I think, but there are two in the front of the building, there are two, a total of four classrooms but stacked, one on each other. So, a first floor and a second floor classroom attachment to the front of the building facing North Landing Road. The blue areas there are the renovated spaces that just are, need to be changed to attach to the building. And off to the left, in upper-left corner, the blue area is the existing cafeteria, which will be renovated, but mostly so that it can be pushed out a little bit and some additional cafeteria space added. Also lots of site work here. You see in the front of the building, the bus loop being recrafted. Right now, it's a little, just a little U-turn almost on the side of the building. This will allow buses to pull up in front of the building, to line up off the street, and then to exit onto North Landing Road. To the left and behind the building is a new student drop-off, parent drop-off area that'll allow parents to pull in, drop off, turn around, and exit back to North Landing Road without crossing student play areas. Certainly, this school, I think of all of them, has one of the more difficult parent drop-off patterns, so we hope that this will help correct that. All of that happens at the budget vote on May 15. The one slide or the set of slides that you've not seen attached to this are the ones that have to do with budget. It's because now that we've pulled it apart again, we're recrafting that budget. We're in process of doing that. We had a meeting Friday where we resolved some of the cost issues, and I'll be back to have conversation with you and with the rest of the public about that. But it'll be about half, it'll be about half the size of the previously proposed project. Are there any questions, anything that I can speak to with regard to this project?
Board, does anyone have any questions regarding the capital project?
Thank you. Also, want to spend a little bit of time, tonight's presentation for the 1819 budget is the capital portion of our budget. So, that is buildings and grounds, debt service, and transportation. And we begin here tonight, as I always do for every budget presentation, just reminding the public and the board and ourselves that this really connects to the district's goals so that the idea that a budget is an expression, a financial expression of what the district intends to accomplish, I think is important to remember. So, our goals of fiscal responsibility, direct that the budget will be structured to maintain our facilities, to provide a safe learning environment, and to provide resources in terms of building and space that allow our students to reach their goals. So, tonight is very much an expression of that portion of those goals. The areas in green on the budget calendar we've accomplished, so we began in October, we've been working our way through this budget, and as of January, began the formal presentations of the various components of the budget. We, at the January 23 meeting, we reviewed the first program portion of the budget, and tonight, we'll take a look at capital upcoming. At the next meeting is the second program portion of the budget, the general ed portion. You can see here that tonight's component, the capital component, composes about 14% of the entire budget. And that budget is for maintenance of the buildings, upkeep of grounds and fields, student transportation, it includes our replacement buses, transfers for capital purposes, and debt service. And in all, it's going up 4.9%. So, why is that? It's a total $14 million budget, a $680,000 increase to reach that 4.9 level. And you can see here where the significant change is. So, buildings and grounds, student transportation are both going up, mostly driven by salaries. I'll talk to you about some new staff that's included in this. Debt service is level, virtually level. But we're including a piece of project funding associated with the new capital project. So, we are, the clock continues to roll, and we are receiving additional state aid. And this portion of that, of our expense budget, is using that state aid, that state aid that we receive, to be able to help finance the upcoming capital project. So, it's included as a transfer to capital in this budget. In terms of, I'll show you a little bit more about that in just a minute. But I'd mentioned personnel changes and other significant changes. This budget includes 1.25 cleaners, although they're really almost existing staff, if you will. There's the addition of a 0.25 cleaner at Scribner, it's currently a 0.75 position, we'd be increasing it to 1.0. That position at a 0.7 has been harder than usual to fill and to keep filled. And also, Mr. McNiff has needs between Scribner and Bay Trail. This would allow him to reallocate, have a more reliably-filled position, and also increase the amount of work done. Also, we're proposing the addition of a floating cleaner. It is extraordinarily difficult to get people who want to be on-call cleaners, particularly on the B and C shift. And so, our proposal here, and we did this for years upon years in transportation, is to hire a floating person who will be essentially on every night, will be a permanent employee, and will just be assigned wherever there's a need, wherever there's a vacancy. We believe that that'll improve the cleanliness in the process that we already have in terms of our, cleanliness of our buildings. Also proposing to add, and it's very similar, a district-wide head custodian. This person would, in addition to assisting Mr. McNiff in terms of sort of first-level discipline, planning, scheduling, making sure that the buildings are, that building uses are appropriate and so on, would also serve as a floating head custodian. Right now, we have no one who serves in this role. So, when a head custodian's out, we very often will ask the cleaner to perform some of those roles. And if the cleaner's out, then the building goes, if it's an elementary school and during the day there are relatively few people, it goes empty. So, we believe that this is a good use and an appropriate use of funds, should improve the operation of that housekeeping portion of the budget enormously. And we're also adding three route drivers. We are requesting the addition of a driver that will split up elementary routes, particularly at Cobles right now, they are particularly long and overcrowded. Non-public ride times have gotten more and more crowded, and we're at the point now where several of those runs are over an hour. So, we want to split some of those up. And we're allocating one additional driver for potential special education and other Also, this budget reflects the board's commitment to long-range planning. You know, this is, when it comes to capital projects, when it comes to buses and bus purchase and those kinds of heavier equipment pieces of the budget, long-term planning's essential, and this budget reflects that. So, we have had a plan in place where we're gradually increasing the general fund share of the debt service purchase by $80,000 per year. This budget continues that pattern. We'll be looking at that in the future, and that pattern might be revised, I think, in the next year or so, depending on what happens, both with our budget and with the state budget. But for now, we feel it's appropriate to maintain the current pattern, so we are doing so. We're also including $100,000 planned transfer to capital reserve. We began that planned transfer last year, and while we can't maintain it, I don't think we'll be able to maintain it at the level that we proposed last year, we want to at least begin the budget planning process with recognition that that's necessary. So, the $100,000 is included. And I mentioned the increase in transfer to capital, that one, just about $1 million is to offset the cost of the proposed elementary school additions project and/or to provide work on the existing bus garage. It'll also be used to offset, should the capital project be successful, it'll also be used to offset the cost of that project, probably through a transfer to debt service and to be applied to the debt service against the project. This is what that looks like in terms of the objects. I showed you before the functions, transportation, buildings and grounds and so on. Here, you see the objects of increase. And what you can see is that salaries are increasing, you heard me speak of those additional positions. The other items changing are much more modest in terms of scope, and they're changing really very little. You see the capital project funding at the lower right-hand corner of the side, and transfer to reserves decreasing, partially offsetting those budget increases. So, really what's driving this budget, the increase, normal increases in salary as well as the addition of those staff members, and that piece of capital project funding associated with the elementary additions project. That offset by state aid. The terms of tax impact or impact on our tax cap, that transfer is pretty carefully calibrated to maintain our level debt service, our level 1.5 million dollar positive capital share in terms of ongoing debt service. This is where we're at with regard to the budget, so we're halfway through in terms of presentations, which seems hard to believe, but we are not halfway through in terms of the dollar values. Upcoming next is the general fund portion of the budget, so the regular instruction program, and as you suspect, it's easily the largest, so that will be at the next board meeting. Then, we'll follow up with BOSI's programs, while not quite as large, is probably one of the more complex pieces of our budget. It touches just about everything we do. And then, finally, we'll end with benefits, so health, social security, and retirement. So, we're on track, we're on the way, but we've got about halfway left to go. That's going to look like this. So, at the next board meeting, February 27, we'll look at the program budget, the general fund program. March 13, BOSI's, sorry, April 13, BOSI's. The 27th of March will be the first review of the entire budget, along with a look at the benefits portion of it. So, we bring it all together for the first time there, review it, and then review again and adopt on April 27. We need to adopt, that's about the last possible date for that, because we need to have our legal notices published in order to have the May 1 public hearing and the May 15 vote here at the high school from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. That vote's going to be on, certainly, the election of board members, the potential approval of our elementary school additions project, bus purchase, and the general fund budget. So, are there any questions tonight? You have a much more comprehensive package than this. I went through this fairly quickly, you have lots of detail, and I know I got lots of questions about it, so hopefully, those were answered. But is there anything I can help with?
Board, do you have any questions? John?
I just skimmed through the answers to the questions that I asked, so thank you, Alan, and Gina, and Barb, I appreciate that. I haven't, I have to read it more in detail and digest it.
Follow-up.
But yeah, I would, just looking at the explanation, especially on the schedule for cycling vehicles in and out, as well as the buses, I really would love to scrutinize that a little further. You know, replacing vehicles with that low use, I don't think any taxpayer would replace their own vehicle that soon or quickly. So, I'd love to revisit that, give you ideas.
I'd be happy to talk about that. There's, and do read it. We have the, particularly with regard to trucks and so on, we have the advantage of replacing based on state contract value, which is very low. And our trade-ins are based to get closer to market value. So, we're able, and I think it explains this in the...
His response.
In his response to sort of leverage those two things to be able to maintain that fleet without really any dramatic impact. But we'd be happy to talk about it.
Yeah, that, and then, same thing with the buses. I know neighboring districts or other districts follow that schedule, but you know, would there be a benefit to extending it out another 50,000 miles? I don't, you know, I don't know. But you know, as we move forward, if we're going to get pinched to try and maybe extend things...
I think that that is almost inevitable. Whether, you know, we should have a conversation about whether it's a good idea or not, and happy to do so, but I do think that kind of thing, as we move forward over the next several years, is probably going to be inevitable.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions? John?
Well, I think, I think part of it is, we're not able to always apply what may be very logical in a homeowner's situation to a business situation, which is hard. I know one year, we, when we had some fiscal difficulties, we stretched the bus mileage out to 125,000, probably, I don't know, six, seven years ago.
We're at around 125, 120, 125 now.
Yeah, so, we try and be flexible on where we're going and what we're doing and, you know, maximize it, so.
Would I think like the opportunity to provide a little bit more. Our head mechanic, Jim LaForte, is out on bereavement leave, so I wasn't able to give you any of the kinds of things he would love to be able to weigh in with. So, you know, we can have that opportunity in the future.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Barb.
That concludes superintendent reports for the evening.
I want to make sure we got that.
Yeah, thank you.
We are now on page three of the agenda. The next item is change orders for capital projects. It is not uncommon for us to have change orders. You have the information here. The above change orders have been reviewed and are supported by the architect Vic Thomaselli, the project manager Gary Huffman, the clerk of the works Alan McNiff, and assistant superintendent for business Mark Sansucci. So, at this time, it'd be appropriate to have a motion in a second to accept these change orders. And any questions or discussion?
I would just follow up, these are late, certainly late. But essentially, what happened is, as we were closed, as you recall, this had, both these change orders had to do with the 2015 capital project, and one for the plumber and one for the general contractor, fairly small change orders. As we were finalizing the paperwork for that project and going through, making sure all had been, you know, correctly approved and applied and so on, we realized that these had not been submitted for board approval. And while we have the authority, these are 1,002, and one for about 1,000, one for about 2,000, while we have the authority to approve change orders to keep the work going, the practice is always that we will bring them to the board for board approval. And we hadn't... we hadn't done that. So we wanted to honor that process and bring these, even though it's a bit late for that. I apologize, but they somehow, in all of that, they were never, that we can find ever included in that process. So that's why you see them here tonight.
Thank you, Mark. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Six in favor, no opposed. Our next item, financial items, is our single audit report. Copies of the single audit report for the year ending June 30th, 2017 have been provided to the Board of Education members by Ray Wagner, CPA, for your review. The persons responsible for the areas covered by the audit have also received the report. As is in the past, the report is positive and unqualified. As in prior years, there is no material instances of noncompliance or questionable costs. The report has been reviewed and accepted by the Audit Committee at their January 25th, 2018 meeting. The deputy superintendent for business and finance, Dr. Mark Sanzusi, is present to answer any questions the board may have. So at this time, it would be appropriate for a motion to accept the single audit report for the year ending June 30th, 2017.
So moved.
Any discussion, questions? All right. All those in favor? Six in favor. The extracurricular classroom activity fund financial report. The annual independent audit report of the extracurricular, extracurricular classroom activity funds prepared for the Board of Education by Raymond Wagner, CPA PC, has been reviewed and accepted by the district's Audit Committee at their January 25th meeting, and has subsequently been provided to the board for review. The audit contains statements for the year ending June 30th, 2017. A corrective action plan for all concerns noted in the audit accompanying the report. The deputy superintendent for business and finance, Dr. Mark Sanzusi, is present to answer those questions again. So at this point in time, a motion would be in order to accept the extracurricular, I kind of want to say that, extracurricular classroom activity financial report for the year ending June 30th, 2017. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor? Six in favor. We have an item, which is Richard Churenza and Penwood Apartments Tax Refund Resolution Regarding an Article VII Tax Suciary Matter. Richard Churenza and the Penwood Apartments LLC formally challenged the tax assessments for real property located at 1699 Penfield Road for the tax years 2017-18. The town in Penfield has agreed to certain reductions in assessment. Justice Doyle, the New York State Supreme Court, Monroe County issued a decision adjudicating the challenges and reduced the assessments as follows. And you have this information here. The original assessment was $4,774,800. The proper assessment is $3,600,000 with a difference of $474,800. A motion would be appropriate to approve the payments as described and authorized of the payment refund. The refund is, it looks like it's $12,080. And then there's $160 more, so I don't know, that's $12,240? Is that correct?
Correct.
Right. Any discussion or question on this? All those in favor? Six in favor. Policy review. We have a second reading and approval for the ongoing five-year review. That is 1329, the Order of Business at annual organizational meetings, 1330, the number of members in terms of office, 1331, authorization to pay expenditures and sign checks, and 1335, the appointment and duties of the claims auditor. There's another list, which I'm not going to read off. You have this list of policies, which are being edited to remove the term insure. This is something we've been doing over the course of the year, really just to change the terminology without changing the meaning or intent of the policy. Motion would be appropriate to approve the policies as presented. Any discussion or question on the policies? All those in favor? Six in favor. Now we have the Audit Committee Charter. Per the Commission's regulations, it is necessary to re-adopt the Penfield Audit Committee Charter each year. The charter was reviewed and re-adopted with no changes by the committee at their January 25th, 2018 meeting. The charter was given to the Board of Education prior to this meeting for review. So we have a motion and a second to accept the Penfield Audit Committee Charter as submitted.
Allo.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor? Six in favor. Now we have President's remarks. This is the information that Catherine had provided. I'm going to just read these. You have these as well. But the most important thing is that the following BOSI's board members' terms end as of June 30th, 2018. You have this list here. None of these represent Penfield. I think we had ours last year as we had our vote. But these are up. Each district has a representative. The BOSI's board members are elected by their component board members and voted on the same day designated for the vote on the tentative administrative budget. The year of the BOSI's administrative budget vote, this year, the BOSI's administrative budget vote is April 17th, 2018, and will occur at a regularly scheduled meeting. Now, if there's any discussion on that, or any comments or questions anyone could have We also, a couple weeks ago, we had, we attended the Monroe County School Board Association Legislative Breakfast. If anyone had any comments they'd like to say on that, or... We had good representation from almost all of our representatives. A couple had to, were unable to attend at the last minute. We had good attendance by our member districts. It was actually a quite, quite nice meeting. Anybody? Barb?
I'll say something. I was just very, very impressed. Mark, you and your co-chair did a very nice job making everything available, and I thought that having it at Shadow Lake was very, very nice. Convenient for us, anyway. And the Webster people were also happy. I thought the weather was great, and, but I, the exchange, I thought, was very, very enlightening, both from the board members' perspective, as well as listening to legislators and their concerns about education. It was very good. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. And thank you. I also pointed out that all the, all the real work is done by the Monroe County School Board Associations, Sherry and Becky. They really, and the staff there, they really do all the coordination, all the work, and make it very easy for us. We have a script, so it's, you know, it's easy, but it makes for a successful event, and I think we all gain a lot from it. We also have the Monroe County Sports Association advocacy trip coming up for Albany coming up March 5th and 6th. I hope people can attend. This is really what it all comes down to. This is when they're making the big decisions, negotiating the budgets and the various policies. It's our opportunity to really get that last push to make sure they take our needs into account when they negotiate with the governor.
Sharon, are you looking for a deadline on...
Yes. February 14th.
On that?
If you could let me know by...
I'm going to go.
Okay.
Good. Is that geared towards our representatives or to the governor himself?
It's actually geared, the way, again, Monroe, Sherry and Becky coordinate this, but they have setups, they have scheduled appointments with the representatives of our districts. And then we sign up for which ones we want to attend. Sometimes you might sign up for one that's one of your representatives, other times you might sign up for a committee chair to meet with the committee chair. But really, it helps us talk to the people who represent us, either as a chair or as an individual district. And that's really, they value this. They get our time. And again, we, it's very coordinated, very arranged, so we make the best use of our time and really get the points across in the best possible way, and provide them, as we always do, with information about the districts, so they have that as they go and make negotiations and decisions.
Because that was well-received, I felt. It was well-received on Saturday, and the message that I got, that was the first time I went, obviously, and the message that I received was that they're in agreement, our representatives. It's a matter of getting to the governor and getting him in agreement with us. So hopefully, some of that trip can get focused or followed to him, you know, directly.
Well, it may be true, but, you know, come March, we need to reiterate to those same legislators, because sometimes they tend to forget some things. And we remind them again, and we do, they have their staff person in the meeting too, so who really does all the work. But it's really the emphasis of the last drive on this, because March is when every group in New York State is there. And, you know, it's quite crazy, but, you know, I think our message has been consistent this year, and we just kind of reaffirm that message and don't get out of bounds, and just, you know, build the relationship more than anything and continue to build them.
Any unfinished, I don't have any unfinished business. Is there any new business? Our next meeting will be February 27th. And at this point, I'd like to have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting at 8:14. All those in favor? Six in favor? We're done.